By the time she looks over here.
I know, right?
I'm gonna have a-
I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, October 10th, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Here.
Mayor Potem Dusty Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Riden.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Carl Melton.
Here.
Commissioner Nick Paul is not here, but might attend later. Acting City Manager Stephanie Hernandez.
Here.
City Attorney Ashley Smith.
Here.
The clerk is present. Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Rachel. Is Bob Lopez here? I don't see him. Okay, well, in that case, we are going to start with the invocation given by me. And, oh, actually, would you mind doing that? We will have the invocation given by Latonya Boyce, and if you don't mind, and the pledge from Commissioner Stephen Burnett. Thank you. I'm sorry you didn't show up. Thank you.
Join with me in prayer. Father God, we just praise you and we thank you. We lift up all the situations going on across the world, Father God, and we give you glory, Father God, for the peace that we have here. And we give you this meeting tonight, Lord, that everything that you have in order, that we will fall in line, and we praise you and thank you that this is the day you've made and we're going to rejoice. So we celebrate, we pray for those grieving, and we rejoice that tonight, Father God, we will be all that you created us to be. We give you the glory and the honor in your Savior's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Latonya. I would say I put you on the spot, but I know you're always ready to pray, so thank you for that. Okay, we are going to start with the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to appro- Oh, I'm sorry, approve of the agenda. I know that, yeah, item 11 is going to be pulled and may be brought back at a later date. And with that, is there anything else? And if not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda minus item 11?
So move.
I have a motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner McDonald. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and motion passes six zero. We're gonna move on to presentations. Our first one is a presentation on asking the city to support the efforts to help New Mexico obtain coverage under the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act. Is Mary White here? Hi there, how are you?
Good, how about you?
Good, welcome.
Thank you kindly.
You will have, do you have a PowerPoint or?
I do.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm sorry, give me just one second here. There we go. Okay, you will have 10 minutes, and just let me know when you're ready. And if you'll state your name, I'm sorry for the record.
Yes, absolutely. My name is Mary Matatinas White, and I am with the Tula Rosa Basin Downwinders Consortium. I would like to give a 10-minute presentation. Before I do, I'd like to say a very kind thank you to you, Mayor Susan Payne, and to each of you city commissioners for taking the time to listen to us tonight. I thank you for listening to the message, for hearing us, and for considering our request of you. So the Tula Rosa Basin Downwinders Consortium has been working to get New Mexico included in RICA, the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act. As you well know, New Mexico is a state of patriots, as is my family. New Mexico includes the heroes of the Batan Death March and the heroes of Code Talkers. My family includes heroes and are patriots. My father served in the Navy, two brothers also served in the Navy and one in the Army. And we lost Command Sergeant Major, my nephew, Matatin Ray Barretas, in Ambar Province in 2015. He was shot by sniper fire. He was helping one of his men get his rifle unjammed. And so New Mexico gives much. My family has given much. We gave a lot during World War II. In World War II, there was no state in the nation that had more enlisted men and women in World War II. We continue to give a lot as a state. New Mexico has six military installations, and our lives are intertwined with them. My father retired from White Sands Missile Range, 35 years in base supply. So we continue to play a role in our nation's security. And we're here for our nation, and we hope that our nation will be here for us as well. And I'm not sure how to move to the next slide. Ah, there it went. So this slide shows you the number of cancers. There are 19 cancers in total that are covered under the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act. Not everyone would be covered if this legislation went through. The legislation was passed originally in 1990 by President Bush. He dubbed it a compassionate one-time payment. That one-time payment, he dubbed compassionate because it doesn't really compensate a person for their lives or for their livelihoods if they contract cancer as a result of atomic testing. But it does help them to significantly gain their lives back, to battle their cancer, and to keep them from becoming destitute or forever dependent on Medicaid, as 57% of New Mexicans are. So it is a double benefit in terms of helping people to get back on their feet quickly. As President Bush understood, folks who were inadvertently exposed to radiation by nuclear testing are folks that should receive help. My family is directly affected. My mother died of metastasized cancer, was living in Carizozo at the time of the test. My father died of leukemia. Oldest sister metastasized cancer, no early detection. RICA would provide early detection help to rural areas, such as the rural areas of New Mexico. So my immediate family was very heavily affected. But the Pedalta family, our cousins, were in Capitan, 47 miles from ground zero. The Pedalta family, Damesio Pedalta, was in his corral at 5:30 in the morning, riding his horse for a full day on the ranch. He was immediately covered with radioactive ash, as was his horse and his cattle. His windows were, some of them were broken out. He ran into his house to find his family huddled in a corner, thinking the world had just come to an end. And he inadvertently brought radiation into them as he dusted himself off. His horse was the first to die. He got cancer on the backs of his hands, his exposed face, in his eyes, in his throat, and in his stomach. As most dads are, he was the idol of his family. Their world came to an end that day slowly, because over the years, every member of that family of nine succumbed to cancer, except for one, and she's a cancer survivor, lives in Las Cruces. So that is the case with too many families. I wish I could say that we were unique. This is the Gutierrez family of Carizozo. These are the names of family members. Those that are in red are family members who have either died of cancer or who are currently cancer survivors. I have with me in the audience today, Edna Hinkel, her family ranch, Edna. Her ranch was, was it 12 miles, Edna? 27 miles from ground zero. Her family is hugely impacted the same way. And if you're comfortable, if you are here in support of this measure, could I ask you to please raise your hand? Thank you kindly. So there are a number of people who are directly affected by this issue. And so some of the things that took place, of course, we all know a lot of the facts, is that when Trinity was detonated, there were 13 pounds of weapons-grade plutonium. Only three pounds fissioned. The rest, 10.7 pounds, went up some 40,000 feet in the air, rained down across New Mexico for days. So we were kind of double-dosed, only three pounds fissioned. A lot of the plutonium is still out there. But we also were double-dosed in terms of radiation exposure. The Manhattan Project knew that, as of in May, they did a pre-test in May, the 1,000-ton test, and they determined that if you drop the atomic bomb 100 feet, detonate it 100 feet from the ground, it will cause widespread radiation contamination, but there won't be death that day. Radiation takes a long time to settle in a body. The cancers are latent. They also, it was a war, of course. It was wartime, and we had to keep a secret. And we totally understand that. So that was the 1,000-ton test. Then they proceeded to the 2-kiloton test, which was Trinity. And so indeed, it was widespread radiation contamination. After Trinity, the amount of plutonium was cut in half for Hiroshima and Nagasaki. So New Mexico was double-dosed. There was immediate radiation contamination. No one died that day. There was no property damage. But Oppenheimer advised his higher-ups how to drop the bombs on Hiroshima and Nagasaki such that they would detonate at 1,600 and 1,800 feet respectively, causing immediate widespread death and destruction. That was not the case for Trinity. In the case of Trinity, we were able to keep our secret, but there was widespread radiation contamination. Again, those cancers are latent. They reside in the body for many, many years sometimes. So all of this is very widespread knowledge. I have with me the Chapter 10 of the Los Alamos Historic Document Retrieval Archive. This is a copy of the map of 50-mile radius. Within 150 miles, there were 500,000 people. Within 50 miles, you can see that there were 110 ranches, farms, or camps. There were 21 towns. Often, the historic record says that it was uninhabited, and it was not. But it was a different time. It was a war. Back then, we're not here to blame anyone. That was a generation that is largely gone now. It's a generation of scientists that did testing on chimpanzees, on dogs. You can see some really terrible things that were done to sheep and goats, and even humans. You see the things online of men in military being marched directly into an atomic test. So while that was many generations ago, five to be exact, we want to make sure that this never happens to a new generation, certainly not to our children or to our grandchildren. And so we want to acknowledge what happened. And in acknowledging, there is really no problem in doing that. The facts are already out there. It does not cause people to be deterred from living here. We love New Mexico. It certainly does not deter tourism. In fact, we're seeing that it enhances tourism. People have these innate fascinations with it, curiosities. And so to be included in RICA means an economic benefit to New Mexico in that it saves lives. It helps people get back on their productive feet quickly and back to their families, as opposed to having to sell their home in order to make ends meet and to get the cancer treatment that they need. So if 100 people in Alamogordo receive this benefit, that's $15 million to this community. So not only does it save lives and is the right thing to do in that regard, it has an impact in terms of commerce. And it's politically expedient, as we found when it was passed unanimously. Our extension was passed unanimously in the US Senate, three thirds, two-thirds in the House, signed by the President. And so now, this legislation was passed in the Senate, and some of the heavy hitters that came along with it were US Senator Josh Hawley, along with Ben Loehmann, Republican Josh Hawley, brought with him Lindsey Graham, Ted Cruz, Marco Rubio.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to stop you. I apologize.
No problem.
If you want to just finish your sentence, I will absolutely let you do that.
I appreciate that so kind, so much. So our ask is that you consider doing a resolution or a proclamation in support of our efforts, as have the western states governors, the full New Mexico House and Senate, our full congressional delegation, J.D. Vance, Ted Cruz, Marco Rubio, Marsha Blackburn, and some other very heavy hitters. We ask you very kindly to consider doing that. We have a movie that's premiering in Santa Fe entitled First We Bomb New Mexico. And as you know, those movies here in Alamogordo and throughout the state are bringing a lot of tourism to New Mexico.
Thank you.
Thank you kindly.
I am actually very interested in what you have to say. I think it's, I don't think it's a secret to anybody that I will never go to the Trinity site. I'm not going. I'm not touring it, and I'm not interested, and it's in part for those reasons. And so I'm actually very interested in what you have to say. Just for the record, just so everybody here understands, this is a presentation only, and there's no action taken tonight. I'm sure they explained that to you. And so maybe at some other time, we can bring that back as an action item. Or, you know, maybe we could, as commissioners, do a little more research or something. Or if anybody has any questions, if you just leave your information, then we could reach out to you, of course.
Yes, I'd love to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you again very kindly.
Thank you, and thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. I appreciate it. Okay, we are gonna move on to our second presentation. We have Kevin Jewell, President of French Brothers Homes, and he is going to give us some information on current affordable housing crisis and how current zoning and setbacks are outdated. And welcome, if you will state your name for the record. And as I said, 10 minutes. I did let her go a little bit over, so I will-
I got a timer.
Go, buddy, but I will still let you go just a few minutes over if you need to.
My name's Kevin Jewell. I'm the President of French Brothers Homes. First, you know, for the commissioners, I appreciate you guys listening and spending time with me. And Madam Mayor, I appreciate you having me here. It's no secret why I'm here. You can see up there, affordable housing crisis. One of the things that we're focusing on, moving into the president position in September, is what initiatives as a city that we need to move forward. One of the things that we've identified in Alamogordo is our average sales price right now is around $365,000 for a new home. When you look at that price point, it becomes very unaffordable for people in the city of Alamogordo. So when we look at the household income, we tie it to the $365,000. We recognize right away that we have a very large affordability issue in Alamogordo. So the question becomes, what do we do about it? What are the steps that we can take? Three things up here that highlight to give facts to where we're at is, in Alamogordo, we typically average 33 starts for ourself as a company over the last decade. That's pretty sustainable for Alamogordo. It's pretty rhythmic. Over the last 18 months, we've seen a drop in about 50% of starts, and a lot of that is due to the affordability issues. When you look at the reasons for affordability issues, it really comes down into several things. There's labor costs, there's land costs, and then there's zoning requirements on city ordinances that put us in a position that increase cost. And I know Ms. Stella, we've visited, she, they're working on redoing the ordinances right now. So I think it's great timing to do this presentation so that we can get things in front of people. And I know we can't vote today, but to get it on the agenda as an action item. So when you look at the affordability issues, I don't think anybody in here would be happy with it where interest rates are at right now. Interest rates are hovering around 7.5%. They could go up a little bit more. And when people say they're gonna go down, the days of being in the 3.5 to low 3s, high 2s, that's not gonna happen for a long time. That was an abnormal low. The last 22 average is usually around that 5.5 to 6.5%. So when you look at the interest rates right now, coupled with the affordability issues, it poses a big problem for Alamogordo. With that, the base housing is full, and we know that the base is a large part of our economy-driving force in Alamogordo. Right now, this last year, the BAH for Holloman service members actually went down. So affordability of the homes is going higher, the cost of sales is going higher, and then the buying power of one of our largest buyers in Alamogordo, their allotments for housing have gone down. So the disparity between the two is going in a much, the opposite direction of what we want it to do. When we look at the affordability, we partner with Future Real Estate, who's done a great job of helping us look at the data from the MLS. When we look at what price point we need to try to get the homes into, it's really around that $250,000 price point for one of our product lines. When you look at the information from MLS, in the last two years, Alamogordo has closed 227 homes in the price range between 225 and 275. The majority of that is the resale market, because transparently, we can't build new homes in that price point right now. That's just a statement of fact. And anybody who is around the homebuilding industry, labor costs have gone up, material costs have gone up, sort of coming at a price point that is in that range is almost impossible. Tying it back to where the interest rates are at, when you have interest rates going higher, what were we buying homes at, you know, 2.5, 3 years ago? It was in the mid-3s, low 4s. No one's wanting to sell their homes right now who are locked into an interest rate at that price point. So then when you look at the resale market in Alamogordo, that resale market's actually dwindling. We're about what they call an absorption rate, which is how many months of inventory we have on hand. It's about 3 right now in Alamogordo. The national average for a healthy market is usually around 6. So 6 to 7 months is what you're shooting for. In Alamogordo, we're at 3. So when you couple those things together, and you look at where we're at and where we need to go, we really have to try to remove $115,000 off of our sales price, and we're pretty confident we can do that with some changes to the ordinances. It's not the only thing, and that's what I want to be very clear on. It is a step in that direction that we need to take in order to have an opportunity to provide housing in that price point. Click it one more time. There we go. So talking about benefits from a city level, this is information that you see up here from the National Association of Home Builders, so a third-party data that are being provided. For every 10 new homes, you can see the local revenue tax side that comes in from it. We feel that with this product that we want to bring in Alamogordo, that we could realize 30 additional closings to what we already do. So you look at that, the tax revenue coming into the city from that side is around $1 million, and that's just from the lands, from the homebuilding side. That's not even taking into account the construction that would have to go on for the development of the land. Jobs created, all those things, so it impacts far greater than just French Brothers as a whole. The way we want to adopt the ordinances is not for just one community that French Brothers builds in. It's across the entire city, so that we can have the same opportunities for multiple land developers and multiple builders, so that not one entity is benefiting from a zoning change, that everybody has the same opportunities to provide affordable housing to Alamogordo. So looking at some comparisons, Las Cruces is our closest market to compare to. When we build homes in Las Cruces comparatively to Alamogordo, in Alamogordo, we're roughly 8% more expensive to build homes than Las Cruces. What that equates to for the exact same home, exact same option, square footage, everything, price point difference from Alamogordo to Las Cruces is around $20,000 to $30,000 for the same exact home. So when you talk about affordability issues, a city that's 50 minutes away, that's a pretty big price difference when you're talking about the exact same home. Things that we talked about already that contribute to that, land costs, labor costs, and then we have the lot size zoning requirements that does impact what we can afford to do in Alamogordo. What we're proposing is not anything out of what we normally run into in any of the cities that we build homes in in New Mexico. What we're recommending is that we adopt the zoning requirements of Las Cruces for their R1 and their R2. We know that it's tried and true. We know that it works. It's the recommendations from the state level of zoning sizes. And when we make those changes based off of current cost structures, the difference between just the land development side between Las Cruces and Alamogordo is about $11,000. That's before you even start on the home side, okay? When we look at product changes, and this is just looking at specific changes to look at, what we're highlighting here is what Las Cruces is doing in one of the communities that's both R1 and R2. Where we're much different than them is on our rear yard setbacks and our side yard setbacks. The International Builder Code and International Residential Code requires a 5-foot setback on the sides, and that's for modern fire materials. And then the rear yard setbacks in Alamogordo is 30 feet in depth or 20%, whichever one is less. That requires us to have a land size that is pretty robust comparatively speaking to the size of home that we need to be able to put on the lots. That land cost is a big contributing factor to the price point of the homes. So what I wanted to highlight is things that we benefit from it. If we make these changes, one of the things that we will be able to do is we're confident that we can bring in the home price to around $250,000 on an average sales price. So that means that we have homes on the low end. We have some homes on the high end. That's a new home product right now that's not offered in Alamogordo. No one's even coming close to it. What we do know for certain right now is we have an affordability issue right in front of us. What's right around the corner for 2025 is a land development issue. It's extremely expensive for developers to develop the land right now. And if we don't start making those decisions now, just like what Stella and I were talking about, if we don't make some of those decisions now, we won't have land ready for 2025, which then greatly impacts our ability to respond to- then greatly impacts our ability to respond to populous growth, airmen that are wanting to move off the base, new airmen coming in because there's just not a lot of land opportunities for us to build on. And, and that's just, that's not an issue in 2024, but it is right around the corner in 2025. What I highlighted here was just municipal codes that we need to look at. We have side yard setbacks. And what I wanted to highlight is from the state of New Mexico, they've adopted the International Residential Code of the IRC, which outlines what the setbacks need to be based off of what fire material you're using. So you can see on here, if you have great eyes, I know Sharon brought up earlier that you need a magnifying glass, so we'll work on how large the text is. But if you look on the walls for non-fire resistant rated for zero hour, which is what your exterior walls of a new construction home is, the requirements are five feet. What that five feet equates to of us having an additional two and a half feet on the sides is several thousand dollars per side. So all these little changes or increases from what the state of New Mexico and, and the IRC has adopted is, is cost increment on the homes that has to be passed on to the homeowner. I'm close to my time, so that is what I wanted to present to you guys. I do encourage that we move it to where we can have a discussion to put it on as an action item to adopt. We're ready to start construction in January on the new developments, and we, we feel with our timeline that we could provide housing at the end of 2024 in this price point. The longer we delay it, the longer we go without being able to have new homes that are in the affordable price range. So with that, I'll stop talking, and if there's any questions, I'll answer them.
Yeah, we can't answer.
I know. I just had offer.
But that was a good one.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. We are going to move on to public comment. I do not have anybody signed up for public comment. So with that, we will move on to the city manager's report.
I don't have one.
Nothing.
No, ma'am.
Just so everybody knows, she gives us a very comprehensive report every week, so that's why we don't get one here. You just have to read it. And how do you empty a room? You finished your presentation, that's how. Not the first time I've said that, it's okay. I'm going to give them just a minute, sorry. I feel like it could get noisy or something, so. Okay. All right. We're going to move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission. Does anybody have anything?
Don't.
No?
Everybody.
Okay. All righty. You see that, right?
Yeah.
Can't make this up. Okay. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to pull off the consent agenda?
I don't.
Okay. With that, do I have a motion to approve items three through eight on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Wright. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second from Commissioner Mountain. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Mountain.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Ridden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes six, zero. We have nothing move, removed from the consent agenda, so we're going to move on to public hearings, and I'm going to turn this over to our city clerk, Rachel Hughes, who will give us some information and instruction on that.
Okay. Yes, Madam Mayor, so this is a public hearing where you will be hearing evidence for and against why this resolution should be rescinded. We had a letter of objection from Mr. Douglas, and so before we begin, I will have to swear in the people that are going to speak. That being said, the commission then acts as a judicial, like a judge, so you may ask questions of the people that are going to give evidence. So with that, I'll meet the people that are going to speak up front. Okay, so please raise your right hand, and each of you state your hand, please.
Joshua Turner.
Paul Bennett.
Christopher.
Okay. So do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
I do.
Hi there. How are you?
I'm okay. How are you?
Good. I'm good. This is my first public hearing, so bear with me.
And it's mine as well.
Okay. Well, we're in the same boat. So I guess what we will do is we will start with your presentation.
Okay. My presentation is basically that I came to the meeting on June 13th, and we came to, I thought, an agreement that I would have six months as long as I made progress, and I've made substantial progress on the building. I've had several major setbacks because of, well, within two weeks of the hearing, my father passed, and I had a hard time dealing with that. I'm still having a hard time dealing with it. I did put a tremendous amount of effort into getting the roof put on. I've purchased large quantities of materials to complete the reconstruction on the back of the building, which, which seems to be the major hurdle. And I, I was dumbfounded when I got a meeting or a, a call from a gentleman saying that my building got condemned at the last meeting. And I felt like I made, I put a lot of effort, not only physically, financially, and emotionally, into getting this done. And I'm, I was, I don't know, it was extremely upsetting because I felt like I was doing what I said I would do, and then it turned around and the commission kind of changed their mind. And I kind of feel like I was being kind of pushed by kind of big government, and I'm, I'm just a little guy. I have to do the work myself. And, and so I kind of, I felt kind of kicked in the teeth after all the effort that I put into it. And I want my, I want to be able to retain my building. My father left it to me. He did not care about the building, he cared about the contents, but I do care about the building, and I've made a lot of effort to improve it, and I want to be able to retain it and not be forced into selling it for pennies on the dollar. And there are several problems with the neighborhood, and I've got several compliments from the local businesses about the improvements that I've made on the building. The gentleman across the street that has the mechanic shop, the, both managers, I've addressed both managers at the, Messia, one of the growers, seller cannabis industry people that are right next door. And, you know, I, I kind of look at the timeline that I was given, and it was very difficult to complete, especially with the building next to it being connected. They've connected their roofing material to mine, and then until that building comes down, I cannot complete that side of the building either. And I did get, I did talk to a contractor about rebuilding the, the back corner, and he assured me that, you know, that the building's not going to come down anytime soon. And I, I need time, and I kind of felt, kind of feel pushed. And I know that there's a gentleman that's, you know, buying up the block and probably wants to develop it, but I need, I need a chance. And I don't want to be kind of shoved, shoved out of the way by some rich Texan. And I'm trying to retain what I got, and I'm working toward it, and I'm, you know, I don't know much else, what else to say besides, you know, I genuinely put in a ton of work. I mean, and I've had my, my tools stolen. Almost weekly, somebody tries to break into the building, and I have to repair it, and it's, it's, and that's not going to change until something's done with the structure next door. I've, I've run people out of there that are squatting. And I actually had to call the police on Friday night because one of the neighbors down there called me and said there was people congregating behind the building, and I had to call, go down there and confirm it, and then call the police and ask them to remove the people. It's, it's posted, no trespassing. And I asked the officer to go ahead and violate the people that were trespassing. Because what they'll do is they hang out, and then they try to punch another hole into my building and steal my stuff. And I can't leave tools down there, I have to transport them daily. And it's just, I had to, I mean, I borrowed equipment to work on the roof, and it was stolen. And then I had to replace the equipment that I don't own. And it's, it's, it's incredible. I think, you know, the biggest problem we got is the homelessness and the drug use. And I've witnessed drug deals, and I've been, you know, it's, you know, I want to turn it into a commercial venture where I can like get some income off of it. But probably the best use for the building would be for drug rehab or homeless shelter because that's what we need. I, I'm at my, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to complete what I started, that's what I was brought up to do, and I want time to do it. And when I get pushed all the time, you know, and then, you know, so then I have to go through this and have to go fill out, I mean, an appeal and gather evidence that I've done stuff. That takes time away from me being able to complete my project. And I'm, this is, I guess that's my first picture, I guess we can go through those. That's where I've repaired a crack in the building, I'm getting ready to paint it, I've painted the side of it green, the front of it will be painted green very soon. Could you go to the next one, please? This is the repair I did to the wall and painted over all the graffiti for they have a fresh palette for the next one. I have also solicited people to paint murals on the wall, and I've also gone to local Lions Club to like get money to get it done. And I was talking to a lady that was doing murals downtown, and she said that there's like a much lower risk of them painting graffiti on it again if there's a mural painted. And, next one, please. And again, I, I haven't finished the top of the building. I, my spray equipment limited how high I could get, I've modified it so I can finish that. Once I get the front of it painted green, then that'll be, the stripe at the top will be painted as well. But I got, I got the graffiti covered up. Next one, please. And again, it's just the wall painted green. These are materials that I've purchased to work on the roof. Next one, please. I had to, I had to get all these four by, four by fours to be able to brace the roof for when I rebuild the corner. And, and as that gentleman was saying, the cost of building materials has escalated so much, it's incredibly expensive, and I'm, I continue to acquisition materials the best I can, and it'll get done. It's just the, the timeframe is unrealistic. And next one, please. This is the last attempt at break-in, and so the door has to be replaced, but again, that's down the road on expenses, and the, the longer it takes to get rid of that building on the other side, I cannot see how I can get a renter in there until that burned-out structure is gone and I can complete the, that fourth side of the building. Next one. Here's some of the cinder blocks that I've purchased to help, not very many. Next one, please. This is where the struc, the structure of the house next door is connected to my building. There's a total of four inches between the burned-out structure and my building. And it, it does make it more difficult, and it also, water does flow off their roof between ours, between our building and mine. Here's the, I replaced a majority of the roofing, the wood to replace the roof, and I'm working on that. And I don't have a most recent picture of it. And I think that's, is that the last picture? No? Okay. When they re, when they were doing the driveway or the parking lot next door, they damaged my, some of the cinder blocks on my building. I did address it with the contractor, and he didn't, I mean, all he could do is acknowledge that it happened. Also, the, the tree next door fell, took out the electrical to my building. I have to use a borrowed generator anytime I need to operate electrical equipment. They're very kind people that manage the dispensary, and they've allowed me to run an electrical cord over there a couple of times to help out. And I'm in the process of billing the owner of the property next door for taking out the electrical. The estimate I got was $2,500 to reconnect electricity, and also the tree hit that corner of the building and did some damage, but most of the damage is from drainage. And then this was posted the 22nd of May. The original mailing was on the 26th of April, which did not give the 30 days to, to respond to the, whatever you can, I don't know, what did you call that thing? What do you, what did they call that thing?
Farming.
Okay. And there wasn't 30 days. And there wasn't 30 days lag between me and being mailed and it being posted. And that's basically what I got to say. I, I've talked to Sharon, I mean, Mr. McDonald, Josh and Stephen. I don't know if I got a whole, yes, you did. I haven't talked to Dustin. But I'm asking for time. I need, I want to retain my building and be able to make it into something. And, you know, the timeline is just, I mean, it's overwhelming. And I mean, if I had really deep pockets, if I ran a concrete company in El Paso and had that kind of money to back it, it would be done. But I do not. And I have to do this on my own with very little support from community, family, or anybody else. And I, I plead for time and please, I want to keep it. I don't want to sell it for pennies to Lee Aranzis or whatever his name is.
So if I remember correctly, well, and I went back and I refreshed my memory, I have the minutes here from the meeting that you showed up to, the last meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
I just, I, and I want, because I want you to understand, I want to put this in context, context for you so you understand why we did what we did, okay? So what happened was, there was some discussion about a fence and I said, I don't know if the city can provide that because you asked about fencing. Do you remember that?
I do.
And then Acting City Manager said she was concerned because if we do this, meaning if we give the extension and you don't show significant progress, it would be difficult for us to get another warrant to go back through the process. Commissioner Riordan asked if we needed another warrant to go through the process. City Attorney Smith said to access the building or go onto the property, we would have to. Commissioner Riordan said, we already have photos of everything. And then our Acting City Manager said, but to show he has made improvements, we would need to, in order to get back on the property, okay? So then we decided we would allow you that time. So you said that, he said, was he sure, this is Commissioner Riordan, was he sure that Mr. Douglas would allow us to show, would allow us in to show us the property? Mr. Douglas said he would be more than happy to do a PowerPoint presentation in 90 days to show what he has done. Commissioner McDonald said it is not six months now, it's three months. There was some discussion about that. We said 90 days. Commissioner Burnett said 90 days to show progress. Commissioner McDonald asked if we were going to indicate what we needed to be done. And Mayor Protem Wright said, we cannot stipulate exactly what he has to, what you have to do. And I said, well, I'd like a date. And so we settled on a date. But my point is, is you said that in 90 days you would come back. Now, I understand that your dad passed away, but looking at the situation, none of us knew that. And so we have on the record that you said in 90 days you would come back and do a presentation. So when nobody could get ahold of you, when nobody could get ahold of you, and I believe that our code enforcement manager is going to show us some evidence that he did try to get ahold of you, we, we, we didn't know what was going on, right? So we really didn't have an option. And, and I'm only bringing this up because you're saying that the timeline wasn't realistic, but you agreed to that timeline at that meeting. So if it wasn't realistic, that would have been the time to say, I don't know if I can do it. But you said absolutely you could come back and do a presentation. So when you didn't, I think that's where the confusion came in. Does that make sense?
Yes. No, I was, it is overwhelming. But I, I have put a lot of effort into this and I'm sorry I missed the commissioner meeting. And I don't understand the difficulty on getting ahold of me. I provided all my information to the code enforcement gentleman on our first meeting as soon as I found the paperwork in the window of my building. And I do not understand, I mean, why, I mean, I gave my phone number, my email and, and my home address. And yes, he did, I have seen a video of him putting a card on my door. I believe it was September the 28th. And, but I never saw the card. So I, I don't know what happened to the card. But that was the attempt to get ahold of me, was a, to come to my door and put a card on. And I, yes, I dropped the ball on putting a PowerPoint presentation together on what I've completed. But I kind of, I've gone back and kind of, you know, I don't, I mean, I did show pictures of the progress that I've made. I hope you're willing to go back as well.
Okay. So who do we have here?
Paul Bennett, Facility Maintenance Manager.
Can you tell I've seen your name and never met you? Sorry. I'm just being honest.
Well, you have met me, mayor. So.
Well, that makes it even worse. Sorry.
But in all fairness, I didn't even recognize him without his shirt. I was like, who's that gentleman?
I think that's the problem.
Thank you for having me here.
I see lots of people every day, sorry.
Commissioners, Acting City Manager. So I'm Paul Bennett. I'm the Facility Maintenance Manager for the City of Alamogordo. I'm also their EE98 general and general contractor, GB98. And I am the Property Maintenance Inspector.
Okay.
Okay. So with this.
I actually have heard that about you.
Yeah.
I have. We talked about that at the last meeting, I believe.
Thank you. So with this structure, I believe if I'm not mistaken, this has been going on since 2016 that we've been looking at this structure. I've been in it two times myself and I haven't seen any improvement until just now when I saw the roof being fixed. That was the first thing. I don't know if it's been covered yet and rains and all will not do good on that plywood if, if it's not covered at this time. The main concerns are the southwest corner and the northeast corner. Those are really falling away from the building, the structure. And unless you go down and do pier drilling and do piers underneath, that structure eventually will collapse. Because whatever's happening underneath, we need to get down below that to solid ground in order to secure it.
That makes sense. Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
I got one.
Yes, sir.
Are you a structural engineer?
I am not a structural engineer, so I can't.
Thank you.
I can't go by that. That's why I would say that you would need a contractor that does that type of work.
No.
And would do that.
Really need a structural engineer down there to assess that. So you said you're an EE98 and what else?
And a GB98.
GB98? How many years?
For the EE98, about 15 and about 10 for the GB98.
Okay. Thank you.
So you're more than qualified in certain areas, even though you're not a structural engineer?
I've been in construction my whole life.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
I do have a question for Mr. Douglas, if you don't mind. Do you know who reached out to you after the last meeting or after the meeting where we, we voted? Do you know who reached out to you to tell you that we had?
A gentleman that owns property here. I think he's out of Roswell. I don't know his name right off the top of my head.
Was the gentleman that came and spoke that night on the other dilapidated building? Cabara?
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you. I was just curious.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I just, just curious. Okay. We have, does anybody else have any questions? No? Code Enforcement Manager Josh Seitz, how are you tonight?
Good. How are you?
Good. Do you have some information for us?
I do. I don't have any pictures, but I do have information. So my appointment, my job is to enforce provisions of not only city ordinance, but international property maintenance code. There is a big misconception that you have to be certified in order to enforce provisions of international property maintenance code. Even a certified building official does not take anything with international property maintenance code. I've done extensive research on that and looking in the classes on that. IPMC is not anywhere in that certification process. So there's nothing that says that you have to be certified to enforce provisions of international property maintenance code. It's not in the 2024 version, it's not in the 2021 version or the 2018 version. And I could, if you wanted, if you want, if you needed, I could go back. We have several. But it's not in those, for sure. As far as this building is concerned, yes, it is dilapidated as far as the structure is concerned. I did go out and did do an investigation and looked at it on Friday. And the patchwork that has been done is already showing signs of separating. The walls are already separating from the mortar on the southeast corner where he's, he's actually the, it faces west, I'm sorry, southwest corner, where it faces west. There's already separation from mortar mix to the actual cinder block already. As far as the roof goes, where that property is zoned per ordinance, a licensed contractor has to pull a permit and do that roof. A licensed contractor has to do any work on that property because it is a commercial property per our ordinance. So I'm not taking away from anything he's done. He's done a lot of work. It just needs to be permitted first and follow ordinance, which hasn't been yet. It is still showing signs, even though the mortar mix is there, it's still showing signs of dilapidation on that northeast corner. That northeast corner, over my extensive research of the case files from approximately 2016 to what I took in 2023 this year, that, that wall's been the same. It has actually gotten slightly worse over time where the, the cracks have gotten bigger of that corner. So it's, as far as IPMC is concerned, it is a unsafe structure, is a dilapidated structure. It's a hazardous structure as concerned as what International Property Maintenance Code dubs it in 2024 now, is a hazardous structure. When I was out taking these pictures, I did have the gentleman who works at an automotive shop come over and speak, and speak with me. And we talked about it because he was concerned that somebody had broken into the, the building. And I said, I don't know, I'm just taking pictures of the outside. I'm just looking at it as follow-up. And he said, yes, the gentleman's working on it to sell it, but I don't know who would buy it because it's going to fall on. Those were his words. So other than that, it is still in the state where it's at. Even though we have passed this resolution, we're not going to go tomorrow to, to tear down this property. He's got two years to fix it. He just needs to follow the proper steps.
Okay. Yes. And I was going to mention that. So what about you notifying him there's some question about that?
So the International Property Maintenance Code letter, all of them, give you 30 days. At the 30-day mark, I go get the search warrant signed.
Right.
And then I typically try to execute it the very next day on the 31-day mark.
Okay. And did you notify him? So he was supposed to come back to us in 90 days. Did you notify him at all before that last meeting?
I did not notify him. I attempted to. I did leave that business card in his door, but I did not make contact with him.
Were we required to notify him within that 90 days? I think that was just a courtesy, right?
Yes. There's nothing, nothing written anywhere that says that you have to notify for commission meetings or anything else like that.
Right. And we do have on the record that he said he would come back in 90 days and give a presentation. So.
Were you in your uniform when you gave the business card?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. So he saw it on the video in Alamogordo official?
Well, he saw on my body cam video.
Okay. So that was the video he was referencing?
Yes. Our policy, code enforcement's policy is anytime that you are suspecting of a public contact, like going and knocking on a door, you have to activate your, your body camera. So everything's captured. It's very, very similar to what the police department's policy is.
And I think the biggest thing to highlight here is that we're not tearing it down tomorrow.
Right.
It still has two years.
Right.
Right? So two years is two years. I mean, that's, that's a long time. I guess, I mean, we can all agree that two years is a long time, that's 24 months, right? And that would be two years from the time we voted on that?
So with the hearing tonight, so after a property has been, the resolution has been passed, they have 10 days to commence starting either demolishing or rehabbing. So because we're at this hearing tonight, I wouldn't consider the 10-day starting until tomorrow.
Okay.
To give due process time.
Okay. Okay. All right. So Mr. Douglas, do you want to come back up?
I have one more question for Mr. Bennett.
Okay.
What are your license numbers? Your license numbers? What are they? Mainly your GB. I don't really need the EE98, just the GB.
Are you going to look it up? Oh, okay.
Just curious.
So my EE98J is 31059.
31059.
Paul E. Bennett.
Okay.
Our license number for the City of Alamogordo is 388879. And I am the qualifying party for the EE98 and GB98 on that license.
So the GB98 is a 31059?
And we have copies, we have copies at, on record in HR.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have, the 31059 is my EE98.
Okay. And then the 3887?
For the EE98, I don't.
You're just a qualifying party on, on the cities.
Qualifying party for the city's license.
On the city's license.
I had to give up.
Yours.
I had to give up mine, so I can't do any outside work.
Okay.
Outside the city because I put it on the city's license.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
So Mr. Douglas, would you like to come back up, please? So do you understand that even though we did that, you still have two years to make those corrections? So nothing, really nothing changes for two years unless you don't show progress? I do, I do have a concern about what Mr. Bennett said about the work you did and it's already becoming an issue. And I, I get the financial part of it. I mean, I'm, you know, I understand that. But if we don't do these things, then we have no protection as a city. We have no, you, we have, there's no accountability. And so for me, you know, if we, if we rescind this, then who's to say it's not going to be two, three, four, or five years down the road? I mean, we're literally kicking the can down the road if we do this. And we can't do that. I mean, we've got to hold people accountable because these things need to get fixed. I get the building next door. As a matter of fact, Josh, I'm sorry, Manager Seitz, do you know what's going on with the building next door?
After a resolution was passed, they too have two years to demolish that building. So they have been contacting contractors, trying to get that demolished. But it's, it's hard coming for them to find a contractor within their budget.
Yeah. Okay. But they still have two years. And when did we do that? Do you remember?
If I, if I guessed, I'd be lying.
The same night as his, June 13.
Okay. Okay. All right. And their plan is to tear theirs down, which I guess that one was the one that was burned down or something, right? Yeah. Okay. All right. So anyway, yeah, I don't know. Is there anything else you'd like to add or?
I.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
Have you put a membrane on the roof in itself?
Yeah, I still have to do some flashing. But that's what that big row of white stuff was. I had a friend that has a carpet store that drove a forklift down there to get it on the roof.
And that's rolled out and installed on the, over the plywood deck?
Yeah.
Is that like a TPO roof? Is that what that is?
Yeah, it's a single membrane.
Okay. Rubber, it's like a rubber sheet?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it's probably made out of old tires, but I don't know. It was made by Firestone, so.
Okay.
The manufacturer.
Well, thank you. I just, I hope you understand that after reading these minutes, I, you know, we didn't know, we had no choice. But you do have two years to correct that. And with that, I think, do we just, do we take a vote now or what do we do? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
So, real quick, by condemning this, he's got two years to fix it, but...
He'll resell it now because he's got a condemned building.
Is there any stipulation, like from, from now till then, that if he did try to sell it, that that could be rescinded or pulled off that condemnation?
The other issue I see, two guys, is in the event that this goes to court. I was here when Sahara Apartments went to court. It took us nine years, okay?
I was here too. I remember.
I was there for the main start of it. But the issue I have with it is the fact that if it goes to court, if you don't have a structural engineer saying that that building is not structurally sound, then more than likely he's going to rule in favor of them, not us. It's just like...
Didn't we have that same outcome on Sahara?
It took nine years. And I believe we, I can't remember who we had on staff at that time. We had Dean Hunt here, who was an engineer, and he was on our side, so.
Yeah, I feel like part of that nine years was the attorney we had at the time, but that's just my opinion.
It could be, but...
Anyway, if I remember right, we finally got it torn down because...
And that one was a true...
Because our attorney, Tria Bengothe, finally made that happen, if I remember correctly. Okay. So, with that...
I'm definitely interested in retaining as much of the value of the building as possible. And I may have to sell it. And with it being condemned, I'm going to get even less.
Okay. All right, well...
I guess it is what it is.
Do you have any kind of tally of what you've got invested in it since June? Dollar amount wise?
Bring receipts or anything? Any receipts?
I did not. I don't have receipts. And some of the, some of the stuff I bought secondhand.
So, you want to keep it, but you might sell it, is what you're saying?
I, I mean, it's good, if I can't get anything out of it for, you know, the two years it's going to take to get the structure next to it demolished, it's, it's, it's a money, it's becoming a money pit. I, you know, I have limited resources, like everybody.
So, what happens if we rescind it, and two years down the road, you still own it, and nothing's done? Then what?
Well, I have to complete what I started. So...
So, your intention, even if you sell it, is to complete it first?
Yes, because I need, I...
So, you would have two years to do that? If we left this in place, you would still have two years to do that?
But, okay. Things can happen in two years. And if, I haven't been able to return to work because I have to complete this before. So, I mean, my resources are getting pretty well-used up, and I'm going to have to replenish them some way. And that'll probably be through employment. And then, then I, well, so, I mean, I'm just trying to be straightforward. So...
All right. Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Okay. So, is this just a motion, or?
Yes. So, your question would be to, is there a motion to rescind Resolution 2023-20?
And this would be to rescind it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there a motion to rescind Resolution 2023-20?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon.
This is to rescind, right? Yeah.
Motion from Commissioner Reardon, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Burnett. This is a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton?
Nay.
Nick Paul is not here. Stephen Burnett?
Yea.
Josh Rudin?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Nay.
Dusty Wright?
I don't know what to do. I'm going to say nay.
Susan Payne?
Nay. Motion fails 2-4. Is that right? All right. Mr. Bennett, could you come back up for a second?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm speaking only for myself. I'm really sorry that you were questioned and that your integrity was questioned.
Not a problem, ma'am.
I, I, I believe that was uncalled for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to Item 10. Consider an Act upon Ordinance 1683 for first publication, a map amendment to change the current zoning of the property located at 1111 U.S. Highway 70. And Stella Rael, our city planner, has some information on that.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners, Acting City Manager. And on this, well, mine's going to be a little more pleasant. So, yes, I am...
Give me a second, Stella. You're moving my minutes up and down.
Okay, thank you. Okay, there we are. So, this is zoning case 2023-0006A. Property owner Alberto Serna, who resides in Chaparral, is the owner of the, the building in question, the property in question. He has given his tenants, owners of the business that are leasing from him, permission to, to be here on his behalf. And those owners are Stephanie Ortega and Brandi Blair out of Las Cruces. So, the, the property owner is requesting for a map amendment to change the zoning of the property located at 1111 U.S. Highway 70 West from C3 Business District to M1 Light Industrial District. The reason for this request is to allow Mrs. Ortega and Ms. Blair the opportunity to run a pet crematory business at this location. There's a zoning aerial of the location. Yellow dot indicates the parcel. As you can see, there's so much mixed zoning designation within this area. We've got light industrial, which is the pink. Ignore the, the blue up there by the brown, which is C3. I think that's just a misalignment because we can't have two different zoning designations within one parcel, and it's showing both C3 and R1 there. So, and then we have your manufactured housing subdivision, we have manufactured park, we have single-family dwelling, R1. Then we have the lighter tan color, which is C1 Neighborhood Business. Here's a better view of, of the area. This area is approximately 1.727 acres. And like I said, Mrs. Ortega and Ms. Blair are actually renting the, the property. And besides a pet crematory, another business that's going to be run there is monuments, grave monuments by Mr. Ortega. Fire Services has, and Planning and Zoning has already approved that business registration for that portion. But for the pet crematory, they definitely have to be in a light industrial zoning district. So, just again, showing you the area, it's, like I said, quite, quite a large parcel there. So, findings of fact, the application was filed and all fees were paid. We did place a legal ad in the Alamogordo Daily News. We sent out seven letters to, by certified return receipt mail to surrounding property owners within the 200 feet, excluding the public right-of-way of this parcel. As of today, we have not received any letters returned undeliverable. We have not received any phone calls of opposition, anyone questioning anything. So, that's where we sit tonight, and I am open for questions. Staff is recommending approval of this map amendment.
Does anybody have any questions?
I'll just make a motion to approve Ordinance 1683.
Thank you. Yes, a motion from Commissioner, or I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Wright, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Was that Commissioner Reardon? Second from Commissioner Reardon. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Rudin?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Sorry, my computer's frozen. We removed Item 11 from the agenda. We're going to move on to Item 12, discussion on allowing handouts at commission meetings. Commissioner Reardon has some information on that.
I didn't ask for this to even be on the agenda. I was told it would be on there in my name, but I just, at the last meeting, a gentleman handed out a handout before the meeting, prior to it even starting, and it was removed from us. I, I had asked the question of when that rule became a rule, when the commission adopted it, and it turned into a pretty heated exchange. So, I just wanted information of when we adopted that rule, so. But there's, we can have a discussion, but it's not an action item, so.
So, do we need to discuss this?
Not really.
Anybody need to discuss it? Okay.
My issue at the last meeting with the handout was, is if the gentleman would have read the handout to us at the podium during unscheduled communications, what's the difference between him giving it to us or reading it to us? We violated his First Amendment right, so.
No, we didn't.
We did.
No, we didn't.
Because you don't like the gentleman that handed it out?
The difference is that if he hands something to us, how do we prove that he didn't hand us a sticky note or, or some kind of little subliminal message on there? How do we prove that?
What do you mean?
What if he handed you the handouts and yours had a sticky note on it? Or Stevens had a $100 bill in it or something? How do you prove that?
You don't.
Exactly.
My, my point was, is the commission...
It has to be on the record. I did, I will just say for the record, I did call Geno Zamora after the last meeting. He is the one that came and did the ethics training. And he was, he said, best practices, do not take handouts at a commission meeting. And what he instructed me to do was to let them know that they can give it to either the city clerk or the city manager, and that they will email it to us, and that way it is on the record.
All that needed to happen the other night was give a copy to the clerk so she could enter it into the record.
Yeah, well, when you give, when you give seven people a handout, how do you prove that the handout he gave us is the same one he gave the clerk?
So, what's the difference between the handouts we get in our box that are handwritten notes from Mr. Summers?
Because they're given to us by, they're, our step is open.
Sorry, guys.
And it's given to us by the clerk. Is it not? Am I, am I wrong that all mail is open and given to us by the clerk who has stamped it in?
That is correct.
If he'd have handed it to us in the parking lot, what's the difference?
We're not in a public meeting.
The letters...
We're not in, okay, it doesn't really matter.
I'm not going to really, I'm not here to argue with you, but we violated...
I'm just telling you that the attorney that I spoke with said that we should not be doing that, and that I will not do that. Everybody can do what they want, but I will not do that.
If that's the case, then you need to put it on the agenda, and the commission needs to approve that rule. Because going back to that resolution in 2012 that staff provided, there is absolutely nothing in that resolution that states that rule.
That's fine. Then you probably should make it an item on the agenda.
I'm not going to make it an item, I don't really care. I just...
Then, then there's nothing to discuss, let's move on. Okay.
So, we're going to enforce a rule that's not on the books? That's never been passed?
Item 13, discussion with possible action regarding setup of an infield development district. Commissioner Reardon?
This is my item also as well. I'd like to start the discussion with staff and, and set up, I don't know if you've driven, the other day I was driving around down in Sharon's district here, and there is a lot of those lots down there that are already demolished and already cleared. And those lots down there, the gentleman that was doing the presentation earlier was talking about a 40 and a 50-foot wide lot. And I remember the commission had done in previous years, we had changed something with the zoning for that area down there specific. And I don't, I'll have to ask Stella again later. But, you know, that'd be a perfect area down there to, to start trying to rehabilitate some of those vacant lots that are already there. And once you start, you know, pick one street or two streets and you start building new homes, there was a builder about 10 years ago that started something similar to that, but then he kind of dwindled away. But El Paso did something very similar to that, and Las Cruces has got something similar to it going on right now. So, I think we should task staff to start looking into how we set it up, how we go about it. You know, you get, get, you know, I know the hospital has a big organization. Now that the sale's completed, they may have some funding available for something like this. We could partner with the local builders association, we could partner with Habitat, and figure out how to, how to make it work to revitalize some of those areas. It's not just, is Walker in your district?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All the bad districts happen to fall, or a majority of it fall in District 5, but, you know, you could maybe look at going from 10th Street to 1st Street, and from White Sands to, say, Florida or Cuba, and focus on that area to start with. But, I'd say, nobody's...
Okay. So, what's his possible action?
Just to give direction to staff is, is basically, if you guys are even interested in doing it.
I think it's a good idea to start looking at at least...
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Instead of going down there and condemning it, we can revitalize it. And, you know, some of those down there need to be torn down, obviously, but some of them don't.
But are you talking about the city paying for that?
No. You said it, the infield development, there's a lot of grants out there. Like I say, Las Cruces is doing a huge one on their old golf course down there right now. And it's more on the commercial side, but they have residential infield development as well, where you go into the older neighborhoods and you start revitalizing them. And once you go in and start building new homes on some of these lots, or refurbishing some of the older homes that are, that are fixable, the neighborhoods will start improving, you know? People will start moving in down there, buying some of the older property and fixing it up or demolishing it and building new. So, you just got to get the ball rolling.
So, you're, what you're saying is trying to help some of these contractors find funding for that?
No. The city will go after the grants, or, like I say, they need to do a little research...
But what would the grants be for? I guess I'm confused.
To start the process of how this works. I know the gentleman that did the one in El Paso, and he said that's how they started it. They did, there's some grants that can be applied for. They set up with a nonprofit to kind of run it. And like I say, Habitat would be a good one, or the Builders Association, or all of them. And, but basically, the discussion tonight was just to get the ball rolling, have them start doing research of how we set it up, how we go about doing it, if it's legal for us to go down and purchase some of the land so that we can use it to, to revitalize this, or if we have to have the nonprofit purchase it. There's a lot of different ways of doing it, so.
Commissioner McDonald, did you have a question?
I have talked about this since I've been in office, about revitalizing down in the 5th District. And I, I think that, you know, I said, when you start looking at the lots, I, I can't speak for everybody in the 5th District, but I can speak for this. You know, we have spent a lot of time and effort of talking to the people, trying to contact the owners of the property. And we have a situation where people do not respond. They are, right now, I said, not unless there's something that is not a waste of time. And from what I have heard, it is not profitable to build in the 5th District. And so, I, I, I wish you had said something to me, you know, about that. I said, since, you know...
That's why it's in the discussion.
No, I'm just saying this, I'm not, I think it's a great idea. No, I'm just saying this, I'm not, I think it's a great idea. But, you know, we have been talking to people. We've gone out to speak to people. We've asked them if they were interested in selling. We have tried to contact people. And so, sometimes when you're looking at, you know, at least trying to revitalize, you have to have the participation of the people. Every lot that is empty down there is not, it's owned. And people choose to do what they want with it. And I have heard in meetings where some of the land is worth, is not worth very much. And I, this is how I feel, because it's on the books at the county assessor's office, that that land is at least worth $5,000. So, when we go out and we start talking to people about putting something on that lot, they have to agree with. And some of the people are not willing to accept $5,000 for that lot because they've had it in the family for a long time. Now, this is just me. I said, and I'm not saying it's a waste of time for people to go, the staff to go after information. But I think before they go after, you know, the research, they need to find out who's willing. Because we, like you said, we just can't go and take that land.
And when a private individual or a nonprofit approaches them people, they may have a little bit different mindset than when the city government approaches them.
It's not the city government that's approaching them.
Who is approaching them? You guys, is it individuals or?
We were asking if they were willing to look at doing some type of, you know, revitalization. And, you know, specifically, we were looking at in the Dudley area, since the school is going up or the center is going up.
And the problem we have down there also is, those lots are 40 feet wide, but they're 150 feet deep. So, you know, the city would, if, you know, and it's just a discussion. It's just to see if you guys are even interested in looking at it. But to get the ball rolling and see, you know, worst-case scenario, it doesn't work, and we just keep doing what we're doing.
Has everybody heard of an infield development district? Do you know what they're talking about?
No.
Okay.
El Paso did one about 30 years ago.
I'm almost like confused about where the money exchanges. Like, who's applying for the grant? Who's receiving the money?
The city would apply for it, and I'm not sure how El Paso did it. And that's what this question is on here for, is to have staff start researching, like how El Paso or Las Cruces or Rockwell, how they started the process.
Okay, our city planner looks like she has-
She may even have-
Looks like a woman with information, so.
She was here when Mark was here, you know, so.
I just want to clarify the definition of an infield development. For those that don't know, because a lot of people don't know what that is. So, an infield development is construction of buildings on vacant or underdeveloped land in places that have been previously developed. So, for example, there's a lot on, let's say, New York Avenue that at one time had a home and has been torn down for many years. So, yes, you can go in there and consider that infield development. I understand what you're saying about staff going out there and researching about grants and all. I personally don't know if that's possible. You know, these are areas that I may be interested in that lot, and I go and purchase it, and then I build a home there. And yes, they're very narrow lots.
Very deep.
Very deep, very narrow. But we also have an ordinance that if those lots existed prior to ordinances, which most of them did because, you know, they're back in the '30s, '40s, they don't exactly have to meet those setback requirements.
So, yeah, because what I'm, and I think I'm with you on this one, anybody can do that. So, we don't have to necessarily declare it an infield. I know what an infield development district is. I remember this from my graduate studies. And so, I do remember learning about this. But I'm, I guess where I'm confused is, why do we need to go after grants? You would go after grants, obviously, for funding. But then what would we do with the funding? I guess that's where I'm, I don't, if it's not us that's going to do it, are we getting funding for a nonprofit to do it? Or what are, because Habitat already does that. They get grants for that.
That's the question, is to have staff start researching how other communities have done something similar to this, to start revitalizing that. What we're seeing here, you know, down there on New York Avenue, the county's looking at moving our courthouse. Okay, that's the core of our city. The core of our city is going to start dying when that courthouse moves. Down in Sharon's district, that's the core. That's the original portion of our town. And it's dying off. And you tear the houses down, and you just have an empty lot. And if you drive around those, just drive those streets. There is like every other house. And even, even over, and I think that might be Steve's district, over on Michigan and Ohio and where all those older homes are, almost every other lot is missing a house, you know. And where we've demolished, like on Panorama out here, you know, find a developer or find a program, maybe Habitat could even go and get it, and build a new home on that lot. Because like Mr. Melton had mentioned, it's not profitable for the builders to do it. So, the builders aren't going to just jump in there and do it. So, you're going to have to have organizations such as Habitat or, like I say, the hospital, I heard has a foundation that's being set up that may potentially have some funding where you could go in and do something, just to figure out how to get the ball rolling. And that's the question here tonight, was can we have staff start looking into how other communities have done similar projects? And it doesn't have to necessarily be down there in that area. It could be in the Walker area as well, you know.
You know, that is also a flood zone. So, to even think about building, you're going to, it's going to be between $12,000 and $18,000 to build it up. If there's no foundation there.
Yeah, because even our building on Ohio, when we were in the process of buying it, we found out it was in a flood zone.
Those are all questions that can be answered.
Which you wouldn't think in that area, but it is.
Once we figure out how other communities have done it, you know, and get the ball rolling, and then it may be something we don't even want to mess with. But staff could look into it. You know, like I say, El Paso did it like 30, 35 years ago. The gentleman that actually set it up down there lives out in Tulareosa.
And it wasn't a result of eminent domain?
No, I don't believe so.
Well, I think you have people that own those properties there. And as a result of them owning the properties, I said, to do research on something, and you don't even know if they're going to, they want to sell?
Some of them might, you know. If you, if you had, you know, and like I say, I don't know how they're going to set it up. I don't know what's legal with purchasing or whatever. But if you go in there and say, offer them $10,000 for that, you know, and then build a nice home on there. There was a gentleman, like I say, 10 or 15 years ago, and I think it was like on, what's the one, Maryland that goes to Walmart? I think they were either on Maryland or Virginia. He went in there, he bought three or four of those lots, and he built a brand-new house out there. They were nice structures.
On Maryland?
I think they were either Maryland or Virginia. They were one of those right there. And there's, he only did about three or four. But it brought the property values up because he built a brand-new home right there. And they were littler homes, too.
When did they do this?
They were 10 or 15 years ago.
There are no new homes?
Yes, there is. I'll go get the addresses tomorrow.
I run that, I run those streets, and there are no new homes on that street.
I'll go down there and get the addresses for you. They were like 10 or 15 years ago, and it was a small builder that was doing them. I don't remember his name.
He built one.
It was Ace.
His construction built more than-
He did three of them down there. And I'll go get the addresses for you. There's-
Well, I know there's at least, but maybe not 10 years ago. No house was built. There hasn't been any new buildings in that area in 10 years.
Like I say, they were 10 or 15 years ago. It's been a while, so.
Okay.
But, you know, and it may help with the affordable housing deal, too, because they're going to be smaller homes because those lots are only 40 feet wide. And, you know, but, like I say, it's just for discussion, see if you guys were even interested in it, to see if staff could start looking into how to set it up and how other communities have done it.
Well, you wouldn't send out a survey to ask the people?
I don't even know how to send out a survey.
Okay, so, so maybe we could. I think what we need to start with is really understanding what an infield development district is. And so, maybe, have you ever heard of that, Stephanie? Oh, perfect.
I've heard of it, I just don't understand it enough to make a comment right now.
I kind of understand it, but my understanding is it's for areas or neighborhoods that are basically empty. They're not, not spot lots, so to speak, but they're empty areas that they're trying to revitalize. That was my understanding of an infield development district.
Is that not gold down there? I mean, if we can get the owners of those properties, because a lot of those properties were probably grandma and granddad's houses. They've gotten torn down, but the kids have inherited it, and they don't want to let it go.
Right, and I don't have any problem looking into it. I think that we would not be doing our due diligence if we didn't at least take a look at it. I'm just saying that my understanding of an infield development district is literally that. It's a district. It's an entire, you know, we, I mean, listen, I got to tell you, I don't understand why there's all these comments about your district because-
I don't either.
I drive through there, and you know what I see? You know what I feel? I feel history when I drive through there. I know my mother-in-law, I loved her dearly when she was still alive. She always said, "Take me down there." And she would tell me stories about many of those houses down there, many. It just gives me goosebumps when I think about it. But I love driving down in that area, so I don't understand what the problem is. There's something to be said about older homes that newer homes just don't have. But having said that, my understanding of an infield development district is just that. It's entire, like, neighborhoods that have been, you know, abandoned or whatever. And, but, I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't look into it. So, maybe what we could do is, because I know how much you love to read.
So, what I propose is I'll get a better understanding of infield. I'm pretty sure that the grants thing is out, but I'll go ahead and do a little bit of research on that, and we can bring it forward to see, this is what we have come up with, and then see if there's any further action.
Yeah, and November 26th, we have a new city manager starting. He may have some information. He may know about this. He's from a bigger city. Maybe he's familiar with that, right?
Yeah, November 27th, that's a Monday, sorry, my bad.
27th, whatever. You get what I'm saying. So, he may have some information, or he may have some other ideas as well. So, I don't know, is everybody good with her, with staff taking a look at it?
Sure.
Okay. Alrighty. We're going to move on to item 14, appointments to boards and committees. I am in a conundrum once again, because I have one spot on the Senior Volunteer Programs Advisory Council, and I have-
Let me interrupt you real quick.
Yes.
With an idea, something that I noticed. If you look at the second application, her second choice was airport zoning.
Yes, I did see that.
And we have some vacancies there. If we put one on senior volunteering, the other one on her second choice?
Yes. I did see that, actually.
It might have been your idea, and I just spilled the light, but-
You just rained on my entire parade. It's okay, it's all right. Yes, I'm with you. No, thank you. And, but what I was going to say is, our first application, Ms. Bearby? I don't know how you say it. She was the one that did not get picked last time, and it was the same, the same council. And then they, just coincidentally enough, had somebody move. So, I am going to go ahead and appoint her this time to that. But yes, you are correct. The second application, Sandra Perrington? I don't think she's here, because I know everybody that is here. Her second choice, if nobody has any objections, I'm sorry, I'm going to go ahead and appoint Ms., I don't know how you say it, but I'm going to go ahead and appoint her to the Senior Volunteer Programs Advisory Council. And then Ms. Perrington's second choice, yes, was the Airport Zoning Board, I believe.
Yep.
Just want to double-check that because there's two airport boards, yes. And I'm going to go ahead, if nobody has any objections, I will go ahead. There are three vacancies, I'm sorry, on that board. And if nobody has any objections, I will appoint her to one of those vacancies. Sounds like water running, doesn't it? Okay. All right, and with that, before I close the meeting, I am going to get Commissioner Paul on the phone, and he is going to join us for this last part, if you'll just indulge me for just a second. Actually, let me do this first, just in case I get a voicemail or something.
I think they wanted to bring him in here and like, he's attending to me.
Okay, you with me?
I got you.
Okay, hold on just a second. Okay, Rachel, if you will let the record show that Commissioner Paul has joined us by phone.
Commissioner Paul, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And it is, for the record, is, it is 8:12.
Okay, so he joined us at 8:12. With that, do I have a motion to, if there's nothing else? Do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session? I'm going to read this, I'm sorry, my computer's acting up. Adjourn into executive closed session in compliance with 10-15-1 to discuss limited personnel matters, oh, city manager, and threatened litigation. I believe those are two separate items, I hope. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner McDonald. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem Wright. All those in favor?
That is a roll call vote.
Sorry, it's a roll call vote, yep, I apologize. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton?
Aye.
Nick Paul?
Aye.
Stephen Burnett?
Aye.
Josh Reardon?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. We are adjourned. Find out, okay. Hang on, Nick, we're moving over there. Thank you.
That's what I missed, too. Mine did the same.